We are in order for work. We are going to go ahead and work. I have ordered for work. So, how do you know order for work? This is to inspector Motikari. Motikari made fix a report here. He think I repair say. Then to open a job card. Because Motikari, yeah, the workshop. To open a job card. To assign a job card today. Inform in what's a job card. Identify, clear check, the same that he repair.
Try out hours, am I sure, am I sure, am I sure?
Just in briefly, not in long.
Losse yema receive a car today. My it assessment there. And then, oh, you can get to a mode. What is the next step?
Nene, my stock will material we have job card. I just a procurement.
My challenge, sorry, but I'm a material. My space, they are not really available. But you know, you know inspector, the inspector maybe to furah. Ta furah, to order my my space. But yes, you know my stocks. Agon, you could be. You go away, you could come easy. The Motikari, it's a good idea. So, to me, it is a cycle you can get.
A cycle you can get.
No, it's a good thing.
Yeah, it.
Close it.
Change your degree to say that's racist. The motor, yeah, I'm sure.
Motor, motor is, it's not a motor. Motor, that vehicle is over 28 years.
Last one, yeah.
You, you, you. Police, it's about 8 years, think I got a replacement in motor. You're not, I'm 20, 29.
Well, it's a time for a target of 2, twice.
Twice.
Then my question, it is a timeframe. Besides, you could be. You had the marine service. What can I pin on my workshop? My timeframe is specific. You give a job, then period of life.
Ah, timeframe is specific. You know, it may say. You know, but the nature, yeah, it might pace. And then, you know, see enough every time. To go on, go to the tomb, because I'm fine. Motikari, no go away, it was my practice. But, I know go on, get it. It air leak. You could take on go. It's a my fittings, it's a popo. Motikari, no go down within the hour. But, yeah, it is case, you could my breakage, ah, part of the nature. And then, go to take it after. For on a market, you could she check and book. And to on a market, I'm on. She should not go repair. Can't go replace. So timeframe, you know, you know, it difficult to tap in. You know, you know, you know, see enough.
My comeback, so I should now go from waste management, how many?
Hello? Eh. Who know? Direct number? And then, I don't find that I should go there days ago. Off a day country.
Actually, I could know maybe when the question. Car, I could know my days, because I'm a sata, I want my space. I don't find, I can't get this. So, I'm not. It's Motikari, it's a to garage. I'm not going to shop bizarrely time. Because I did not. Eh, sad zane.
That's sad zane.
Material to fit.
It's a means, so it's to know, to know, to check. I even waste in the practice here.
Sorry, that you could be, my tower, the worst scenario. On the cycle, eh, eh, procurement. Just check the worst. But my, my identifier, what is required? How major, how the repairs are? And now, now, I'm look at my repairs. Actually, my to identify. To that the worst, and it's like. Car, yeah, to, yeah, my to on a good, in the damage. My, my identifier. My space, actually, could move on. It could be, that could move on after all.
Eh. Don't think, ah, it's a, it's a, it's a. Like, I didn't test, I could take, but you know, take it. You, you, in a picture, you know, I can. You know, take it, I could, it's susu ta. Ta identify my components, and other replacement or repair. We have to engage in end user. But no, ah, what is the Motikari? It's a Motikari. To ah, my request, yeah, we, yes, I know that it's susu. You know, but it's susu, ah, this is to know request for material, yeah, repair. You know, go, it's to know go, ah, for, I know that. Ee, the system may not ee, man. Watching the waiter, eh, procurement, open up system. Power, it go. Where is a my request? Where is a request? Eh, you know, so, but you like central stores. Yeah, but you like central stores, you end up. Motor space. Yeah, end up motor space, go, you raise a order, so it was, so it was. So, it is conduct, yeah, I know, direct conduct, yeah, I know, yeah, so, I know that. It is a, you know, you're. There after. Take this, ah, on, man. Because I go, I go, open up system, I go, I go, take this, ah, on, it's.
Because it's a department, you want to go to push.
Eh, eh. I was, I was, I was, I was, that's fine. It could, ah, my request, actually, why? It's a processing, yeah, my tower. I know, she can't move it after all. Don't participate in this.
It's a, it's a, it's a. My, my, I don't go away, oh. But, yeah, but my, my, I don't go away, it's a, 3 days, depending on you. I mean, I don't go to, I can, I should. It may go it, ah, a month. It may, you know, go to, to, maybe, my core, set, I should want.
I think a follow up question. Say, motor, it's a, it's a, it's a vehicle, check. Don't, and if you want, it's a, it's a, it's a. You know, for now, it's a, it's a, it's a cancel. Don't, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. I think we need an answer on that.
Eh. Ah, but, yeah, it's true, I receive a motor, I could fuck away. So, I could, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Maybe, it's a, you know, but it's a repair, eh, or what?
Ah, you know, it's a. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. The Motikari, it's a, it's a. So, I.
Atina capacity, you could get.
Atina, kunya, yeah, material, you could. My, my, material, you could get, my source, you could get. You could take, eh, change it, I can. Mom, she can go it, I forget that, it's a, it's a, go away, I can. But, eh.
But, why? You could map it, material. Mimi, yeah, eh, but you could.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
So, I, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. Oh, no, tengo material, I can fix it.
Eh, but, I'm, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. Eh, that's, I can, I can, you want, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a. Can it, it's a, it's a, it's a. Back, you know, but it's a, it's a.
Sorry, I'm, I'm remain an answer. And it could be, you know, eh, why mostly, you know, outsourcer? Motor, the, the service, it's a, it's a, it's a. Why is that?
Ah, because, I think, mostly, you know, outsourcer.
You know, I'm saying that? Because, and it's, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to. And some of the managers here. The service, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a. And it's like, don't, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, repair. And then, go, so, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, actually, in short, what can I, why it's saying? But, you could. It is a kind of workshop. Yeah, it's a workshop. It no repair both my vehicles. And fields, including senior management.
This is.
Right. Yeah, it repair, my, 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 senior management. For workshop, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can. At school, nah, any vehicle, yes, senior management.
Panap.
Panap. So, the question, it is a prioritization. Could. But, you know, power, yeah, motor, eh, the, eh, reference collection. Or a, a manager, or a director, this one. According to your rules. Yeah, my prioritize, I could take on, I would. They, eh, to put material, so it's a. That's the question. Or why, panap? Pass in a motor, the senior management. Is it, you could, I just so cover. Did you cover, no, motor, them field? Or no, my truck? I think that's the question.
Yeah, it's.
Do you know, fair, the senior management?
No, I did, because I did.
Do you know, do you know, do you know, do you know, far, right, but. Like, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a, Motikari, my commercial. It's a, my private vehicles. My Shandra's, I can, I can. A commercial vehicle, it is, it's a. But, I know, eh, my, eh, for. Can I fuck away, I could know, eh. Could know, could know, to one day, you know, but it's a production. It's, it's, no go, I can, I can, it's, I can go. In the, Motikari, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can. So, don't want, so, we have to do that service, or something like that. Which is a minor, yeah, yeah, repair.
So, why I'm saying that?
Jine tabota ora paya utina makani ka, aninga ane basi. Shitol, shunjau duai shinofanompinamoga makani ka. Diya no fita, diya no responsibility. Saka makani ka ya no bo ma item sa, aki achi spavaizwana na four men. Do ma media structure. Four men na no bro ma space, iya no fitwa pa motikari, ondo pa makani ka. Which monitor ma bata ya fitwa ipapwe na makani ka achi. Do, do, do process achi.
My, sorry, my worry, iripa dravun timutibatire, can you help me over? For your staff complement. Do you have a qualified staff complement? Or do you have some challenges in terms of, you know, the majority are leaving, their majority? Is there any shortage or are you being supported? Are you enough in terms of the structure?
I think also, tikangokwansa kubapamukano, kutu mbokezo, kudaira mvonze, nengi awa vunzo. Because if we then interject, wasatwa daira, three questions awa vunzo. Wasatwa daira mvonzo, yedu esee atantav, yata antava vunza. So we just want those issue yoyo yema, yes, stock, yes theft, monitoring of brand new parts, kuyenda kwazi, kuyenda pa mota, because we've heard kuti the situations, a kuti, patirino tenwa. Patirichingo iswa mmozona the next zero zebati rabiwa. Patenwa ma lubricants, mmozoni, ma lubricants, ajuna, hanaku iswa. So those are some of the things that I would want to just hear him answer.
Hmm, yes, amo vunzwa inda unzwa. But i... I don't remember, for a case yatinayo esee, yokuti pane ma lubricants, akasha igwa.
It was an example?
Eh, yeah.
It was an example.
Kuti, kana kuti specifically, patira shaigwa, wasatwa yako attention yango.
No theft, setra, passe pa mobiwa.
Obiwa pa no biwa, over the years, tuno chinko kana tabiwa. Tuno tama process e kuti tabiwa, tunda tunda process. Tino, tino fange stokwa kana mabiro. But of later, tinah pama pangwa inui atapura esee. Negadi kuti amtaka kwebo, tumbot, tumbot, and sadna vunzo, anything.
I think it looks good, she expect that she does a chinko vunza mvonze.
We have a paywa. We have watch. And from twenty seventeen up to today, as they have. So it's.
It's still getting you one.
Ma taya, ma taya manuani?
Ma taya manuani.
Oh. Saka, saka, i'm, i'm, i'm a problem. I mean, I think person has, wangwa chiti, ndia may tanzini problem, ye gearbox.
Gearbox.
Pa koya mnom. In your view, para qualify what a tier gearbox could really pay with? Right near da, almost, roughly, barry? Ah, but we're trying, you are the manager, so at least mmozoni, maybe, it was roughly around this figure.
Ah, pa, pa, tell me you, anti, anti, bayan yanga, because it's who, a team, the ma, my room. Okay, I'm enjoying that you might, it's, it's my face.
Okay, nda uva vunzo, pane logicere kuti mno, mno esata nyuanes, pa motikari sida fam. Because mota isko famba ipa, ma kasata nyuanes.
Ee, motikari, pa takayipipia kusani, ta da kuti mno eska gearbox kuti, oka inda gearbox mokati, saka kaka esata nyuanes. Susu kozita o ma process, mboke ya, eesache, mboke, saka eska ipa.
Saka iru kubudarini, because ma esata nyuanes, saka iru kubudarini.
Ah, bo, anzi, eh.
Again, again, my boy. I understand that, but gearbox, it no affect us, ma solo va, it no affect gearbox. But you are saying kuti mota ayina, ayina red jetta ipa?
Yes, shunjajese, shispa ipa wa saka this question.
Ah, but what is the reason you kuti sa red jetta, mchiti mota ya kafa gearbox? Because you know, you have view, viswa red jetta, because ayina red jetta. Kada uva vunza, mi kungo, kesu na nasta.
But mno esata nyuanes.
Eh. Eh, 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 negisha. Suka gana manska, eh, cha tshitsa nasu kuti mota. Sare, cha, pa mota kana four. Panzwa kandze, cha pa mota four. Tuni mota tukawana, eh. Pa pa, china china, eh, pa ba, pa pa. Mota ya sare diri four. Memele, hadi shisipu, aspe, arengasi, kumuya, saka, nope, esela, gaugu, kandi kuti. Si ruku famba, idu, idu, da ungo sastainon, si boramba, takan, shi, 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 which is not four.
So what you are trying to say in this routine, uno, ime mota ya kafa, ime rimgarage, nukisa ma part, ime mota mchisa pane ime.
Suno, isuno kunakutika isu.
Eh, wo.
I try and boy it, some point. Andi kunakura ambao tryka, because si, si nu, si nu, si nu, si nu, video. Putara sa situation, kuti, tinema motikari five. Mukawana, opareshe, ne, kafanga, eh, tumbot. Motikari no sko, utse mga ma taya. Pastina kana one time, lo kupe example, pastina kana one really, really like Twitter. Mota ya twesi ya iru marara, ikukuwe, nukufa. Saka, wanu kutaga, kuti ya pane, pa no kunakua vics, no towa motikari. Kana kana, video ya lutu, ma motikari ya uyakunu, pati go iru famba, reme, mota ya kumuya, reme. So iru iru kufamba. Richard Bisco, eh, really. Richard Bisco, mota ya tongu inda kubasa, eh, da, kugo manager situation, eh, best.
Ah, but what, what are the procedures you take, like, to boti mota koo, visa shungsa kafa, shupama mota, mchisa pane ime. Moti process eh, because to boti mota ya koe, ya, 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 nukante ya fa, nso, ta kati kati. Ma process, saka, mno ita nim, kuti me tiro, idi, ewe. Imi mka na mbozo, no visa shungsa, pane ime mota, chidaguni sa pane ime mota, kuti fambe, mno, mno, mno towa ma process, saka etase. Nungo shita me kayre, uvo to, rakan, ote, me, me, kusam, me, kusya, ya, 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 mno tora.
Another way, eh, ah, but, motikari na yachindi ya kafa. Nufanakura, motikari kafa, saka, tene, saka, tene, saka. Tene ma ya paka, paso ya, yu ya fa something else. Amane mabo kusa, pane iya, katanga ku ya kafa, msepa, pa, tse, pane ime. Pane eresa, mso to, rego ti, muti, ye, ya kaya kafa, isna, for example, eh, negadi ti, red jetta. Ta kazo, kusa, cha kati kiba, mso ro pa, ya kama bo, ya kafa red jetta, cheet, yes, nes ya fa, saka, tene, saka, tene, saka. Because saka, msepa, pa, tse, kasa ba vie kobe. Pa, mno go, tura, mgo sia, i, i, saka, udara, na, ini, 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 rego ti, eh, eh.
Uyo ba.
Pa, 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 nukasato, nka, kuseni. Nukasato, nka, kuseni, ya, ampa vunwa, ya, 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 negatewa, na, kandze, la, kajome, ya, kuti, eh, ya kuti, vandalization, ye, yema part, eh, motika. Because kana, eh, past nama, rego si, ah, u, u, akawo.
Yeah, it's, eh, 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 but, eh, ma, ma, rego, zanengari, jmoa, u, 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 zoni, eh, eh, but I think, eh, ma, rego, chunboyi.
I think, let me now comment, eh, bayar shika, bayar shika.
So, process, negadi, I don't, I don't, process is very important.
Yeah, because, but do pane lupo.
Do pane, pane, but, 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 eh, bayara, where you, eh, person, eh, ne, system, eh, ra, donke.
Inengeiri, inengeiri ningino. Nda uzu tashwa mabatiraja anakusalwa mukombe. Mama nukunangani, nokuti mota itu zinofamba ni makete. Gearbox traje sakajune tika lukuti. Gearbox iti rinu da makete sakawanda. Sakamotika arigana itu fambayi fangani mabatiraja na. Sakapamwe inu kunangani iti jaseke siyutu mabatiraja akatufa. Akabiswa ikoko.
Sakatika nda uku tonua wane. I. I.
Then on the same note. The owner, I'm very worried. Can it's owner ma tay maniwan yambo tawo on this vehicle or number thirty-four issue? And then there is another vehicle in ma tay maniwan. And my understanding they could see that vehicle inu kunangani almost seven years, if not eight years. Now I'm wondering. What's happening and it's. But mota, sey mota zakafa zine ma tay maniwan. Where is the problem?
This is what I think. Check.
Murguna this vehicle. Right. The owner has to correct. Motika ri i.
Anu murguna shaka ita is.
Hey.
Inu pay joke.
Motika ri buti hipye kwayanga i. Chuyakono kwayanga ispa ma tpezi. Yae pana tuwi. Sakamati ira kaiska ba. Kari buti mota hipye kwaya itu afanu. Sakai mota i.
Moti iti oru fa problem. Aka ende. Murgita so kuti akaso, makaso nee sa ma viria. Jiguna kwaya ba. Kese yangu kuti kwaya kende kuku kaya kende sina ma viria.
Ayawa, yaga ispa ma viri maniwan. Ikienda, ikienda kuti nukutu kazi kwayanga ine accident. Sakayoko inu kutiso mira udai pana zunu mapipe amagata during the accidents. Pani mapipe pa kafa.
Sakasofa yaka faji.
Ella mapipesa.
Mea, mea, mea. Emadi punzeka. Emadi ya faji.
Foot, ma, 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 foot. Foot, foot break valve nee, nee, nee piping ya. Zoda ma. Pipes.
So are you saying? Ya kana fa olongwe. How long? Ayos, ey, chalumbi minas. Ya kana fa olongwe.
Eh, exactly, exactly.
No, it's okay.
I want specific.
It's okay. So ya kana fa olongwe. Roughly. I'm just here.
All right, just. Just, just one question. Uh, uh, papane one question chat. Munu munetchi ningino ndi checkliste. Just jevukuti rori yau ya. Then munokucha rori sustaitambi ra yanga ine something missing kanauti nee sakada isu. Kuitu atipaino buda. Munenge munerekodi buti zakati zakati mota ipa kawaye yanga sina zakati. Naru inu ndi checkliste. A checkliste zenu renu. Ramunokuti mota yau ya ina ngweda ina vira kanachi. Inonkuti kana even mota yaku buda. You can easily account kuti amota ipa yakapinda munoko. Ya buda, can even nganayakwana ya buda nezunshaya yakakwana. Just that checklist, do we have?
Chalumbi ayos, mira, mira, mira.
Checklist. A simple paper, nungonyoroti mota inu yapinani spana. It is start.
Tase itu rastata.
Eh, tase itu rastata, just for the rekodi. Kuitu atipankwana. Kana mota isu ya buda apa mota, mota ipa takaitambi ra. Yanga yakafa zakati, but yanga yatoboro kanauti yanga yabiswa zakati.
Eh. Nde ngango trangu ipa maybe ma system za se kunina. To rem course siyukui yuvi taji. Ma esu. Ma procedure sacho arguto itu ish. Agaduta anga. Eh ma esu peace.
Ayawa, eh, eh, checkliste, eh, deep procedure. It's just a maintenance inonkuti wa papa.
Checklist, yeah.
Epakampa ne kuti kana gadja ya no to go maka uti mota yaku buda yapinda nezunshaya. Kaita se mota inu yaku buda. Arinaka na chichibeb.
And that's the police.
Ah, di, ah, di, police.
But checklisti. Haripoma paper checklist.
Eh, kuti tikato requesta now you can easily account kuti mota ipa yakaita pana obitini yanga yango fakombe. Then ish 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 rinu da noti. Ah, this is rinu da. Tikari requesta like now. Because ipe parinungonyoroti aris, haritombo di kana police kana chi.
For this one we cannot say because he. Inenge yakataba.
All right, my question is, pana iremota ine checklist? Pana zibaba zese, but tumoto midma kanga maybe we pana timeframe. Pana zibaba zese, pana iremota ine checklist? So how, how? So can I just not checklist? My question is, how do you account? Do you come apart? How do you account? Kuti ma visa vira apa ma isha pana rimwe? How do you account? Kuti ipa garisa maybe you're watching machine? All these things. Can't you see there's a loophole some manager? In this thing, can't you see this serious loophole? You cannot account because mother zibaba think that's when look zero. So which can maybe over forty or so. So can I pass that checklist? How do you account? Because at the end of the day, whatever strategy you plan will be responsible. So by failing share checklist. Can't you see it's a loophole? You could mean minimum we cause maybe over two hundred pana. Who will be accountable for anything? Chinga chiri chiri missing pa pachi, pa mota. But these are public vehicles.
Agreed, Councillor. We shall improve on the checklist, but eh.
But the correct position.
The correct.
The correct checklist apana.
Can I job cut?
On the. Correct position checklist apana.
No, let's.
Checklist asapana, don't worry.
If I, yes.
Abana.
In the name code checklist, but what happens is that eh procedure edu. Motas inu yau, za requesta nee, nozio order for works from the client. Anuka, we are custody inu motika. Kuno we are workshops, chiri ma consultant, we fix motors yau. Sakano yau tawo are the problem, iluka mota i. The eon, the eon. Then isus straight up paid upana eh section against additional works. Total sort my additional works in the eye and open my capture on a job cut. Then eh the particular. Yes, it is job cuts, if vehicle no final creator a job cut. Pano itu a order, no vakuna, kunakliant. Kuti rudagazira mota. Then pa mota eh nah, it's after data assessment. Tikapeda kugazira mota i. You know, final buda shakala.
Okay, and also ma kunutzo sera foot. Ma kunutora ma party pana me mota. Process ya no draft in the iba, ama draft process ya no.
Cannibalization, yes, we have, vanuzi ma cannibalization forms. Don't do that. Um, um, nyorima.
Pana point ya rudaguti ndiri easy pana. Ino indri ananiso tawo pana.
Eh, oh, fine, fine, tumbo mira, it's important. Motika ri matana ngura udoti. Motika ri jingi ziripana pata kaya zichi to iwa. Anditika, zichi vaku pi. Eh, dakwa mukombe anditika. Dopas utana ngura vakaso tiwo. Mama yema batiru tunogu nakufunki zirata kasa rakupi. Ukoko. Kanaguti zaga ningirikira anditika. Chana rudagubunza po procedure eh nyu. Yekuita zinsho, ukumova from that side. Munemai itachi fanga checkliste yanga.
Ino cannibalization.
Ino sara uko for record sake. Iti uyafutu.
Ino cannibalization form.
Ah, ripu eri form.
No, eh, no, but no chenge twane fleet management, which is our, our end users, our customers as well as workshops. No sara uko.
Sakatika abunza tlo wana inu.
In the end user. Ayawa, that's all.
Plakana di. Eh, ziripu madam, ziripu patu pana matoku. Amna mota. Eh?
Masla den, manye, manye. Minaya.
Kana nem, kana nem.
Ayew, yo, ya kaya twenty fourteen man. Eh? Yeah, yeah, twenty fourteen. Twenty fourteen.
Ayewa, they are twenty fourteen inu wa nubuche. Moti kati marines. Ayew. But ya kawaye yari workshop. Twenty four. Twenty four. Dopas zarakemo. Dopas, ya kawaye ne problem.
Inu, inu, inu gearbox nee, nee.
Zin two isos. No problem, ya kana pana. And eh, and eh, ten years later, I sna ma viri. Ten years later. Pati iti says probably. Ya kawaye ne problem zin two. You can. Very young to do zin two. Ten years later. Watirago gato ruu zerugu na uka dira motika ri. Dopas, what is this? The other truck. Truck rage urangu kana pana. Reporte utu ma trucks. Ayewa, problem. Problem. Ah, a big problem. Ayewa, inswaiyoma. Isa tinaku yazu. Kanata wana tawo yazu assist. Just no.
It's a debate.
Eh, exactly. Atinaku pana piti win, ya ne problem, ya.
Eh, ma fact. What is that? I'm a manager. So only a problem that to ask. Train.
Program. Oh, my God, what's in?
Tooling ya juwa.
Ayewa, akuma na program into umsi ya ripana. Ah, no problem. Ayewa, no ne problem.
Ayewa, space.
No, no. No, no. Ira tita namu.
I'm a issue, I'm a issue yaka iti kani kuti. Ayawa, number two. And panga pana eh tooling allowance, I think previously. Yama yaka zuro. Because country ina sa capacity kutinga ma tools unnecessary to fix some of these things. Mavabata ngakuunza ma tools yau. And then it was cancelled. So munamba angotindu yiri ni ma tools yangu. Apa imma mkuansuku atenga. So those are some of the challenges.
Those. Those, lukuti, eh, lukuti ma pata aja iku. Dopas no yawa, ma tools, ma tools. Ni emakusho kama pata no ma tools.
Ma two, ma, ma.
Ayewa, kunu, like my gearbox, kuframa gearbox. I've got my specialized tools. Eh, for my gearbox, it's one of my specialized tools.
No, Councillor. Motika ri kawaye pana. Itchins inu da.
Propeller shaft. Indo nyora requesta yangu propeller shaft. Propeller shaft you regita. Oh, yah. Do it as you. What do I do?
Inu dofungo tika. Yeah, because it means it excuse you now.
Ah, it's excuse?
Yeah. Do you, do you hear my argument? Ah, did you hear my argument? Bomia, bomia, eh, bomia, did you hear my argument? Did you hear my, do you know my argument?
Let's say the argument, Councillor.
And no dofunza, I tell you. Do you know my, my argument, do you base or not?
Yeah, I tell you.
So what did you say, ah?
I know the hand that two chance.
Ayewa, what you, ah?
I want to.
Eh, it's. I just.
Sakaa. I'm talking to.
Protect already.
Ayewa, I think I would like this.
Eh, that's why you picking on me. I don't bother you.
Sakaa, let's open up. We can rewind, talk to rewind of you.
Eh, you can rewind, no problem.
Lukutia rapa, you're letting me to explain myself. So before I argue pana. Problem, I'm getting back with you. Before, that look. Mama, ma trouble.
Ina tawo pointi. Inda order ma space, kanaga.
All right, debat the pointi. Yekuti inda order, andiga, order inaku yah. Then ma kuti, the point I'm giving back to you, ndin manager pana pani. Andiga, da order chinu we da kunamureroa, achina ku yah. It's within my, within my office. Could indeed make sure the challenge yah. I pursue it, there are so many ways of. Did you, kana, but was na ku da chinu. Mukanto munema, munema bureaucratic in greenie systems are remote. Murewa, anekuano reporter, eh, oh, the karas na ku yagen right to the challenge. Dagau dasun, dagau dasun, dale tumas na ku yah. I need to know what is happening. And if you na dau dasun, you better not challenge sakada yaka yaka. Did you do that?
An example again, eh, I mean, I was thinking, an example is for this track is a water six inch track, andiga. Shall we water six inch track? By failure, kuti anau guito, andiga. Pana mama engage mkuansu, mkuansu kuitu. Eh, iti legalep, andiwa. Maybe also to inform the, the Councillor.
Even the Councillor, yeah.
So that at least we were able to deal with this problem. There, there.
One thing from the. But eh, you, you, you. You go does not screw yah. The Councillor can take things from anywhere. I don't follow.
By the law, from our code of conduct, we are allowed to engage any officer, Councillor.
Kupa una town creek.
As long as that matter involves a resident, involves my word. So we are also allowed.
So I don't.
The Councillor, track any rimu no. But by the challenge ya cut. So therefore, nda die, so that we still we can also try to do help. But what, what do you want also is a, is a solution? Ya mess, kiss, mess kiss, mess kiss. But ita man on waya di ni.
Yeah, we know. Go solution. Buti, tine dambuti. We all acknowledge, tine dambuti kuti ma passa yba asku yarne. Uyaru yaka ita mashoma, mashoma. Buti, motika ri, tinu misa motika ri zine kuti. Dagau dasun zita twa. Kucha yachinu, one. Pointa six months kanaku. Fuzi, yachinu itechi two. Pointa timu six months.
Fuzi.
Zibaguaka sia nasian. Sakaa, na ija jinti ma space eh, anu ndi kanati ka order ma space eh, i sus. Oh, nda kanauti se kuna one, one supplier. Who ever it is. Oh, yana zosari chi, pamwe etete. Motika ri. Asa kaya yachinzi, ajiru yu yajiri one, one timu ne, timu eti yu yangu yachu iti bagua chirikuva. Motika ri dinosa, aridirikuva zaidi yah, yachinu eto sakaita timu eti. Buti chi, sunjevi siriku yangu yu eti kuani se kuita basa hero. Dopana challenge.
Um, um, challenge ya ndina eh, eh, Councillor. All right, they good. Motika ra ekona ku fazu five yu eti. Second, iti moti na motika ri. Motika ri de yafa zakati, de yafa profit, profit example about, de yafa pro, pro shafti. Do yafa. True focus on profit. But she is a odison, yaguda, pro shaft, yaguda, gearbox, yaguda zakati, yaguda zakati. Itipan zwe, mochi tawo, chi.
Tinu ko zukera kunyere, maintenance ya tanga yeh. Motika ra ya ku skuti kufamba kwaya nengejita yakanaka. Ne shortage, mota iti rukufamba zakafa, no. Fact jaye jaye, rukufamba zakafa, rukufamba zakafa, zezu we zira ma problem. Pay no zo mira. Ma problem eh, se yu yana zoraku zetu attend to. Yo pe sira motika ri, yata ngachinzi yangu ya gearbox. But when inspecting, onea kuti pro shafti yachaya kafa. Iti rukutu sangani samprane ohi. All these things, jene zina ku mentionwa, maybe. Ine kuti, vanusin, sawa nengua da kutu wawane. Basara uko famp. Thank you. Eh, veke procurement, muripana. Dofungo ziruta uru kapanapa murgunya zosudini. Murguzi mji si sa. Anditika, true doubt of everyone, Arum City Council Department. Aplay ro yani, yake. Jitao tbasaribu de shakadini, shaganak. Man, this is a pana, motika ri tomoti yago ya twenty seventeen. Anditika, ene mimu said, kwenye munemtemu yangu doti. Kana requesti shin, ritingera dini, writing wa. Gorer kapera. Requesti shin yeh, amja dini. I just shand. Ma ku fandra kunyora requesti shin ipi, icha. Sakamuruti zosira mai, masure because munoto ramamju nyora, four times. Requesti shin yeh, motika ri ipi, imetete. And eh, yato we zira footi mai, mama ma problems because vajasotobora. For the sake, ongo tichimuchunchidini, cheat. I may not munee play amja gazirisa ere na po ipa. All right, thank you, sir. Issue yachina yoo, challenge. Right now, tina, tina contractor rapa. I woulda about to supplier ma, ma space, motika zikapire begin. Just now, as you are speaking. How we are here, akatanga supplier, initial supplier yake.
Twenty January.
Twenty January, twenty twenty-two. Eh, last invoice yake yaka isha. It was eleven April twenty twenty-two. ERA TJ, say it's not been paid. If I'm not January, hundred twenty-six invoices, three finance.
Four million.
Four million, ish. Eh. Challenge yachita and equity susu, we procure almost everything. Our turn around time is ranges from about three to seven days. Tender to tender. Eh, ma delivered period edu, eh, normally is about two weeks. But, but no one from our suppliers edu. We get the products that we want. Challenge ruzaiti and equity, kanachincha yah kunoko, achisku padaro. Ma payments are asked for on time, this is evidence. Aduruma karama, arukuda kuti. Eh, what, what am I going to do, nee, 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 my issues are. Sakaa, kwa tiri susu, main challenger edu ne kuti, we procure, but we don't pay. Payment is controlled somewhere else. Priority organization, eh, ma payments, these guys know. Iti kuwa somewhere else. Sakaa, nakapeta tanga, tinu kuansu yage zakato, but chine zinu, zesa sakagara, my voices sakagara. We are dating, we've got invoices that are dating back to twenty seventeen. That have not been paid. Once those things are paid for, as you know, my variations, mama kaku risa, and what if you. But these things, zaga ro toro, zaga ispa pa motika, zaga tope na. Ma supplies are tasara na wesu. Eh, in the market, no rush charge, amai exorbitant prices. Mama chona, eh, supply. Because issues we are not credit working. Atisku kuna badaro on time. Atina standard, you know, uniform system, like any other council corporate. If you go to blow today, if you supply something, you know, within seven days, you are getting paid.